Trouble finding.
Okay, let's make this one relatively. I think this one should be relatively quick. March, I'm calling to order the March twelfth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Emergency Services Efficiency Committee. We have no alternates to see. We have, uh, is anybody present to speak? You're talking. Okay. Moving on, approval of minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty three, do I hear motion to approve?
Think I'll show approved second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I have a copy of them here.
I did read them. Read them in electronic form.
Yeah. Start with old, uh, old business, the facilities committee. So, right now, we don't have a facilities committee yet, we should be voting on it on Monday. It's posted on the, the call, the charge is posted on the town website and open for comment. So. That's what it is. I hope I, I have all your support for that.
Has there been any feedback from residents?
Not, yeah, there's been some feedback from residents, uh, we're taking this, that some of that into account. I think the two big ones right now where they couldn't find it online and I, uh, Shannon got back to them and, and told them how to find the most up to date ones, uh, most of the feedback has been from, people coming up to me and, uh, Matt Clark, who we discussed it for an hour. He wanted to make a bunch of changes that I had already made, he had spoken to me about a bunch of changes, I made the changes to make him happy, he looked at the old copy, he said, you haven't made my changes, I said. Here's the new copy. Next thing, how's your staffing and volunteer levels? I know it's a lot of young kids. Is that just a, a, an impression I'm getting, or is that?
Goes in waves.
So we actually, uh, staffing, not gonna win, we're okay, uh, we actually had a volunteer, a junior, I think she just joined you guys.
Olivia, what's her name?
What's that?
I suppose they shouldn't be using the names of juniors.
No, but it was a junior, friends with, I think, your daughter. She had applied at both. So, we had actually said, you have friends and connections up there, our juniors, we have only one left and she's about to be eighteen. We've, we had a good group and they're now phasing out good with age, but we said it would probably best if she started with you guys.
She's there right now, so.
And then if she wants to transition at some point, or she wants to do medical, but we'd be more than happy to let her ride in the Eagles if she's on call or something like that.
Yeah, we have, what, uh, probably seven juniors right now? Yeah, yeah, about that, yeah.
This is a big, it's a big group, yeah.
And you just had a couple age up, didn't you? Or one? Like, within the last two or three months?
We did.
Yeah, yeah.
Just four.
How's training going for the, the young guys, the volunteers?
Good, good, keep them right in the group when we train. They train with us.
Yeah, there's some restrictions on what they're not allowed to do, but otherwise we're training with us.
But do they need formal training, or schools are helping to go to?
Well, there, there is a formal school for them.
Alright. A lot of ours have been to, to the, um, like, three sections, right?
Well, there's two set, there's two sections of basic, depending which one you schedule for.
Okay.
But, there's basic, and then the next summer you can do advanced, and a lot of ours have done basic and advanced, and that's, that's one week each time, sleep away at the Fire Academy. So it's pretty legitimate training.
Do they start getting EMS training at that point? Or is it just all fire?
They can, we've had, both of our juniors, both went through EMT class.
Are you finding EMT classes? Cause they, at one point I tried to do it and finding a class.
Finding the classes easier, um, the hard part is most of them are, wanna do it remote, so you're doing half remote, half in person. Some of that is going very well, some of that is going really bad, cause you need that in or.
That, you need that, that, that patient interaction.
Well, they're getting that because they either have to ride on an ambulance or they have to go to the hospital.
Okay.
The hard part is, is they don't get, the instructor interaction to teach them how to actually do the skills.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
And they're very expensive. EMT classes over twelve fifty now.
I thought I was wanting to take it, it was only eight hundred, and they sent my check back, because I was the only one that signed up, so they decided not to have to fly out.
Same with fire fighter.
Yeah. Fire one is twelve, twelve fifty, and they're trying to set it same wide, same price.
Or, all the junior academies are like six hundred dollars a piece.
Doesn't, department pick up that cost, or does it's a student?
Nope.
No.
We do have it, so we do have a program with brand new members, that if you join, within your first year, you're trying to go for training, we make, we'll split the cost with you, if you complete the course and actually stay for, I don't remember the terms of it, but, we pay it back to you, but it's, we, we did have a couple of incidents where we paid for EMTs, shut out a lot of money, and then they, and then they were gone.
Gone.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we gotta do it differently, we will pay upfront if they don't graduate the class. Uh, the next time they wanna retake it, it's on them, they're gonna pay for it.
Well, CIP is kinda coming gone. So.
Sure.
Get ready for that next time, yes. There is a meeting tomorrow, they're looking at the out years, if you, if you're interested.
I think it'll just be me and Mike again.
County Union, we heard anything from them?
Other than, uh, funding?
Yeah.
Five thousand.
Alright.
Five thousand with escalators built in.
Are we, is, so that's a continuing five thousand with it, or every year?
Every year, every year, nope, every year will escalate.
Alright.
Something that's five thousand dollars more than before.
Yep. And when you look at their call line, and what their, their call line and what they're actually, we get from billing, because ninety-eight percent of the residents.
Actually have insurance.
Their residents, we have like a ninety-nine percent collection. It's the highway. There's people off the highway that we have, sometimes a difficult issue getting funding, but we have that in our own town.
So, how does the highway, if I remember looking at the map, the highway goes through Willington and then Ashford and then.
Yeah, there's like this little quarter mile, quarter mile, it's a quarter mile sliver of Ashford.
Okay.
That, it never seems to be in that quarter mile.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the tractor trailers in, in Ashford?
Yeah, no, they were actually Indian, well Indian, well Indian.
Going to crash a little later.
Yeah. But, it, it's a start, it's something. They agree they need to be paid for something, they just don't wanna be footing.
Right, for sure, right.
And they actually had a whole formula built out, so.
Uh, yeah, if you could save that formula, because I have a feeling you're gonna be asked about it.
Out of doubt.
Without a doubt. Uh, payroll, uh, uh, contract negotiations that was going?
Uh, the, the dates haven't been set yet.
When's the contract expire?
October the first.
Same as the town?
Yeah, or June thirtieth, but, we did, uh, we're trying to get our date set. Come as this UPFA or.
Yeah, there's their lawyer.
Yeah, they're challenged, uh, they do a lot, so, yeah, a couple of our, our negotiations, cause it's really just one of their members being, one of the IFF or UPFA, whatever it is, is there, but we don't have typically any, sticking points, we try to do the same, with the new, the town employees do, but.
Yeah. We're, we're in that too. I don't think the union wants to meet until like May second or something at their earliest.
That sounds about right.
My, I, I got the, the lawyer on that one, I gotta call him about three other things too. We did the, the, uh, volunteer abatement, uh, is, has been passed, should be on the books.
Yeah.
Any? I don't think I've even heard any issues about it.
There was, the support seemed to be there for it.
Yeah, there's. Oh, that was the other thing, and I'll get to that under new business. The next thing is, uh, the Everbridge. You're working on.
Yep, so we have, we're trying to work on a date in the next, within the next month between here and Tolland, or do it jointly, something that'll be two different sessions that'll be available.
Alright.
Hopefully hosting one here and one in Tolland, but I don't.
Is it a two day class, or?
One day.
One day?
Couple hours.
Good. And what is that? Uh, the, the, uh, how to use Everbridge, how to get your login credentials, how to set up the, uh, databases, how to set up the town website to send people to the correct website, to sign up for the correct database, how to set the parameters for it. I, I, I really would have liked that, uh, to be in a place about two months ago, because you can knock out a block just for town employees. So, during that snowstorm, you can, with one computer entry, you can call every employee's cell phone, home phone, uh, text message and email, all in one shot. All four for every employee, all at once. And, uh, that would have been nice, because, they said eight inches of snow, and I said, alright, we're cancelling, and then I went home and said five inches of snow, and I went, it's going down, it's going, it's gonna go to two, and then it went to fourteen, and I went, I made the right call. You know why? Because I rolled the dice and came up.
Happened to work.
It came up seven, natural seven, yeah, um. So, that's coming. When you were on the board of selectmen, they adopted the framework for how to use that. So, I believe that from Willington, it'll be me, my, uh, Shannon, my, uh, administrative assistant and the two chiefs, will have login credentials for that, we also have TN that can log in to what, once we have the databases built.
And then there'll be a little bit of admin stuff for setting up, like there's, you're supposed to pre-formulate certain messaging, so that when the panic is on, you don't have to craft messages, you just wanna.
Yep.
Pick the message and send.
In an emergency, I think in Tom and I's, or, or, I don't wanna speak to Tom, but, uh, we won't be crafting a message on scene unless it's something serious that we have to.
Right, you can, you can, you should be able to call whoever the first selectman is at the time. I'm, see, I'm, I'm planning on, it doesn't have to be fifteen months out.
So if we need like road closures or we're gonna do evacuation of an area, um, the guy Kevin McManus who runs Everbridge, is available twenty-four seven, um, and I've leaned on him a lot for stuff, and he's the best one to call and say, I need this gun and I need it in a one mile radius of this.
Okay, yeah.
Like that, so that you're not trying to figure it out at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, the, the one mile, I, 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 I'm on the level where, call everybody in town or call nobody in town, those are the two clicks that I'm used to.
We're, we're gonna try to avoid that.
Yes.
But, if it's something like that, that Tom and I need to do, there's, there's resources for us to be able to do it.
Yeah.
So that we're not trying to do it on scene, looking at a small screen.
Yeah, listen to the three radios.
Three radios.
Three radios and looking at your phone, trying to find your glasses so you can read the small. Alright. I think that covers that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that training, because I've got it on my big board of important stuff to do.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to new business, the, the, one item that's not on here is legislative, uh, initiatives at the state level. I gave each chief, what, what is that, uh, raised bill four twenty-two?
Four twenty-two.
And that has a lot to do with both paid and volunteer firefighters that live in the town that they work in. Uh, if you live in the town you work in, I think there's even like mortgage assistance and stuff.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff in there, I.
There is a lot of volunteer recruitment type of.
It's, the, it, recruitment, retention, and it's all state level stuff, and it doesn't affect the, I mean, it, for, it affects the town in that we get to keep our firefighters, but it doesn't affect the town in that the town needs to come up with your mortgage payment. Uh, I, I got to about page three, uh, and I, I was. So then, then what I did was I made two copies and handed it to the chiefs.
I thought that was. A lot of very interesting bills in this session.
Yes.
And, uh, last Thursday, I think, it's still not settled yet, but last Thursday, the statewide and in other states, fire marshals put up a big objection to some proposed changes that seem to have maybe come from the building industry, to greatly reduce code, greatly reduce the code, to get more square footage, like eliminating second stairways in apartment buildings and stuff like that, to get more rentable square footage, and I think, fire marshals, I know Connecticut, I saw the list of, um, testimony that was sent in, and, uh, the, the opposition is very strong throughout the country to it. But, I think it'll get through in some states, but I, I think we succeeded in Connecticut in stopping it, because, um, there were many things bad about it, but one of the things that ties in with what you're talking about is, it was going to allow builders to claim that the local fire department using ladders and ladder trucks would be the second means of egress on apartment buildings, which is obviously, we know in this industry, completely preposterous. It's like, there's not even an ounce of reality in that, but they were gonna try to get that through, so that they could gain back all the square footage in a building that would be the second stairwell, up to six stories. Imagine that, a six story apartment building with one stairway.
Twelve ladder.
Yeah, and a whole bunch of extra staff to operate it.
Take the elevator to the bottom, open the doors and have people rappel down the shaft.
So, anyway, a lot of, a lot of interesting stuff.
One of the bills we were talking about before, fifty-eight, I wanna say it's fifty-eight forty-two, or is it forty-three? Is the one that's changing, like a broad street sweep of, like, state fire mar, uh, administrator, there's changes with the state fire marshals.
Yeah, that's next week.
That's next week, I know, the Connecticut Fire, Fire, State, Connecticut State Firefighters Association, uh, I sit on the board there, we're not, there's a lot of good things that's in the bill, but there's a lot of bad things that just do not have clarification that we're fighting as well.
Is that on the fire administrator side?
Yeah.
Cause the state fire marshals are trying to support it on the other side, the state fire marshal side of it?
Yes, of course, these things are paired together in one bill. They, what is it, sixty-something pages? It was a very big bill, and, um, there's just a lot of stuff that needs clarification that nobody did. Like, who's gonna actually, you know, if they take the state fire administrator away, it could be the head of, the state police that's running, cause it's gonna go under desk. So.
They'll come up with a deputy chief to put in charge of it, because that way he doesn't have to deal with it.
There, there's a lot of concern. So, but there's a lot of things in it that we have to be very careful what actually goes through.
And there's another bill that we're looking at heavily, that, that's, there's three quarters of it, it is freaking awesome, and the last quarter is gonna kill us, alright?
And that's, I, and that's this one too, it's, there's, we were talking about the OSHA stuff a couple weeks ago, and some of this puts the NFPA stuff in, and, yeah.
Okay. Any budget issues?
Are you still under new business?
I'm still under new business.
Just under new business, I'd like to just say thank you to those that came out last night for the, um, after action for Hi-Chase. Uh, we did draft, Pete drafted some letters for him and I to sign to go through some of the staff to help during that event.
Turned out early in the morning, we had, we had, at least three, three people from the town turn, turn out and do extra work that really did well, uh, Karen, Troy, got the van going, figured out how to get in that office, and then, uh, Tish did some.
Amazing clerical work.
Amazing clerical work to make sure the town didn't take the hit.
And as of today, anybody that didn't hear before, um, the town's been a big hole of any expenses they have from that day.
Yes.
So, thank you to everybody that was here last night at the fire, I think, or, last night was a great learning experience for all of us.
Uh, on that topic, I met with, uh, the Associate Vice President for Public Safety at UConn today, for about, uh, I've only known him for thirty-five years, yeah, it was very productive, the whole meeting was very productive. But, in the summertime, and when the students aren't there, they're, they have more than enough housing, and housing people to watch these people, uh, as a, as a resource.
Good to know.
Uh, usually when the students are all there, not so much.
Right.
And, they've lost all their transport, all the control, UConn has no more transportation anymore. It's all gone to WTRD or whatever it is, Donovan Willimannick, so that's not a, really an option. And, uh, what else did I talk to him about? I had three topics. Oh, no, that, that pretty much covers that, uh, but.
But that's gonna know in the back of our.
Also, he's gonna have his Emergency Management Director contact steward and probably you, Alex.
Okay.
Alright, we, we talked about coordinating some of that, because.
Great.
I, I, I don't think we do enough, enough regional coordination.
No.
I mean, of course, I've never thought we've done enough regional coordination my entire friggin' life.
It doesn't hurt, by any stretch of imagination to have.
Particularly when you have a rich neighbor. I shouldn't say that out loud.
At the end of the day, it only helps us, and if they're willing, you know, be a partner.
And I, I did thank him for, as being the only partner that sends more mutual aid than they receive from us. I've also got to meet with Jim Foley, no, Brian Foley, Jim Foley was his cousin or something. Trooper out.
Anyway.
Anyways, meet with them about their, their fire staffing, make sure that evens out, so. Also dog catches. Dog.
Animal control.
Animal control. It is not me. I did get asked.
Take the little shot there, Tom.
Carr says that right now, but no, it is not.
I heard something disturbing that somebody asked what the qualifications to be an animal control officer were, and they, they said essentially if you can exchange air.
It's gotta be more than that.
I suspect it's more than that.
Yeah, I suspect it's more than that. We've had some good ones. And I've seen some not so good ones, not here, other places.
Anybody have anything else that they need, uh, to?
You went in.
Oh, budget, budget issues, new budget issues. New budget issues.
We're gonna be tight here.
Yes.
We're gonna be really tight. It's, we, uh, repair made trucks killed us. ET two thirteen had over, threw almost thirteen thousand dollars in repairs, when it's only budgeted at three. They're out of our control, but, it'd be tight.
It was tires, right? A lot of tires. You know what they say?
Everything's super expensive.
Right, yeah. We're trying to find out from Donna what we had left over from last year, that's been the turkey park. So. What is that? No, we gotta figure out what's happening with our gear with anybody.
Yeah.
Did they make?
They voted it out of CIP, right?
They voted it out of CIP.
Right, so it should be part of, of your regular budget.
Your regular budget.
You had it in your regular budget, right? But we did not.
Yeah, I switched the, sent Bruce the letter to say we're gonna have to include it, we have to change the budget.
Alright.
I, I. It is twenty-seven one.
Increase. Each.
I, I know on our side, I gotta have it from one, one side or the other.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, it's always been a, a philosophical question, I don't know what it should be.
The sad part is, it sounds like a lot of money, but it gets four sets.
It's only four sets of gear.
I know, I know.
And gear gets worn out, gear expires.
That's why I don't go in the fire, cause I don't have any gear, and I, I don't want.
You want some?
No, 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 no.
If that's the only excuse.
It's my excuse, and don't take it away from me.
Fire school starts soon.
Yeah, there you go. Day one, my bad, my left knee is that freaking big and. Anybody have any thing that they're concerned about coming up in the future that we should start thinking about?
Just get through Thursday night. That's the primary goal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something on my mind all day today, I was gonna bring up tonight, now, I've, I've been sitting here this whole time trying to remember what it was.
I think if anybody has, uh, anyone that they can come out Thursday night, support both fire departments, would be beneficial. Cause I think both of us are gonna get a hit. Just, I think it'll be a rough night for all.
I think it's gonna be a rough night for almost all the departments, given the, I, I, I ran into something I never knew, that if you, if your budget exceeds so much, such a percentage rise, then the state starts taking your state funding until you come back in the line.
We aren't looking at hitting that though, right?
We're about to. Oh, okay, I, I have to meet with you about something else afterwards.
One of the principal's office.
Yes, you're going to the principal's office. So, there is no correspondence to this committee? And again, under good and welfare, I, I thank both your departments for their work at Hi-Chase, and for, for going to see the fishermen down there on.
It's been a long month.
Been a long month, you guys, you've got a lot of calls.
February's a busy, long month.
I think I'm gonna talk to, uh, True, I don't think they get all of the untimelys.
Yes, they do.
Do they? Okay.
Well, one is they're transported, or not transported.
Not transported, they get the untimelys, alright.
They're notified for cardiac arrest.
I'm, I'm gonna have them try to, I try to get numbers from them for untimelys, because I get nothing from them on that. I, I, I wanna know about A felonies, untimelys, and, and, you know, major cases, and I'm, I'm getting nothing. It's another thing I wanna talk to Brian Foley about, he's got some kind of, agreement with them, where they give him more information than they give anybody else. Yeah, and he used some leverage, cause he's got five resident troopers, and they still wouldn't give him the information, he got upset. So. That's good and welfare, any other good and welfare, anything coming up? Chicken barbecue. Easter eggs. Easter eggs.
Um, just one thing for both of our departments, I know we're gonna hard five hundred in our meeting, is apparatus placement on the highway. The tractor trailer fire two weeks, uh, last week.
Two weeks ago.
Uh, two weeks ago?
Two weeks, I think.
Couple nights after Hi-Chase, I was still tired, so.
Yeah.
I was there with the first truck, and I had parked out, like, kinda clo, full trucks over, and when you guys saw the truck, it had been moved twice, because I almost got walloped getting out of the cab. I, I was getting out of the cab, heard the air horn, and jumped back in, and it, I don't know how you missed, no idea. But, we'll be hard for them then.
Well, I got one more thing under this. Three hundredth anniversary of the town is coming up. At the two seventy-fifth, there was representation from both departments. If you guys could find a volunteer to serve on that committee, each one of you find at least one person from your department to serve on that committee.
There was even a special T-shirt, we're both fire departments on the same T-shirt.
I remember that.
I have one of my own.
Did the T-shirts catch on fire if you?
It still hasn't burned. Twenty-two years later.
Wow, well, I want a T-shirt from the new one, uh, with both. But that's coming, the, the committee has already kicked off, they've had their first initial meeting already, uh, Jimmy, our, why am I blanking on his last name? What? No, Callahan.
Callahan, that's right.
Uh, our Parks and Rec Director is heading that up, he is, he's very energetic, very outgoing, he's a great kid.
Free your children, my son.
But, uh, I've got him working with the, uh, Bob Shabbett and, and, uh, why am I blanking on his name, the guy that's the town historian, and, uh, Melissa McKinnon and some other people, and, and he is, gins about this, so I really like representing. And, and he is jin about this, so I really like representation from the department. So, once you figure out who, who it is, have them contact Jimmy downstairs, he's, he's a really nice kid. Um, anything else?
We'll show adjourn.
Second.
So moved. Thank you all for joining us.
Seven oh seven, adjourn.
Seven oh seven, adjourn. Stop recording.